Good evening. Welcome to the July 9th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Tonight's prayer is offered by Councilman Ronnie Martin. Ronnie?
Please bow with me and say a prayer. Before we do, I'm going to mention briefly some of the losses that we've had in our community recently. For those that are not aware, Vice Chair of our Murfreesboro Street School Board, David Settles, lost his son recently, Darius, and so want to make sure that that family knows that we're thinking about them and our heart and prayers are with them and their family, as well as losing a great entertainer, Charlie Daniels, this week. That was kind of a tough thing, and I know for those of us that have a chance to be around Charlie and enjoy his music, we'll miss him too. But bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, I'm thankful to come to you tonight in prayer and thankful to be here in Murfreesboro and serve with the people that I serve with. Father, we're dealing with a lot of challenges in our community today. We've got some health concerns that have all of us concerned about each other's welfare. We've got a lot of challenges within our community related to pulling different groups together and functioning as one group, and I pray that we will continue to listen and learn and hear each other as we go through and grow together. I pray that the people that are serving and protecting us continue to remain safe and that we move back into a place of normalcy as quickly as possible. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, you have before you the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments about the consent agenda?
If not, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and second. Ms. Wright, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance? Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Before you is Resolution 20-R-19, Adoption of the Burn Permit Fee. Mr. Holtz, you have a presentation for us.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Robert Holtz with the building at Cobe's Department. You may recall, February this year, the council adopted Ordinance 20-O-05, which amended Chapter 12 of the city code, fire prevention. Included in that ordinance were regulations for all types of open burning, but it also required two types of open burning to obtain permits. Commercial site burns and bonfires, both will be required to obtain permits. We have worked with Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department and other members of Dale Services to come up with an application, review procedure and process and how to inspect them. We were recommending that a fee of $100 be required for each one of these permits. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Chief Holtz is here if you have any questions for him.
Just a real quick question. Mr. Holtz, how many of these burn permits normally do we issue on an annual basis?
Right now, currently, we don't issue any. It's just a simple phone call, and we go by state guidelines. I wanted to approve them. I think I put on my council communication form less than $5,000 a year in revenue. We don't expect much.
Okay. Thank you.
The...how is this going to affect, across this commercial burning and bonfires? Is that commercial bonfires as well, or is that just any public bonfire, maybe a residential, somebody with a small grill in their backyard, or a fire pit in their backyard? How does that come into play?
Bonfires, and if I'm going the wrong direction, tell me, Chief Holtz. Bonfires is more of a public assembly, maybe a school is putting on, inviting students and parents, or a church is having. That's when we say bonfire, it's more related to a public gathering. There are regulations for burning in your backyard, but they don't require a permit. And commercial, well, what I mean by commercial construction site burning is when they're clearing trees and underbrush.
Any more questions? Have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Are we going to have a second reading on this?
No, it's a resolution.
No.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Nope.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Okay.
Simple majority?
Yes.
All right. All right. We have an ordinance before you, Ordinance 20-0-23, modification of the 2021 budget to incorporate expenditures during the 2021 fiscal year. Ms. Wright?
I know you didn't expect a budget amendment the very first meeting.
Pretty quick.
The good news is, we've received three grants, two for the police department, one for the community development division. These grants need to be budgeted and so we can spend them, so they are a net zero change to our fund balance because the revenues and expenses equal each other. Also, during our application of sending our budget into the state for approval, we caught an error where something was not recorded properly on the bond fund, where we anticipate monies being transferred from the bond fund to the debt service fund each year. For example, when developers pay over time, when they do, they decide to go ahead and develop their property, and there's an assessment on that property that we paid out of the bond debt proceeds. So when they pay that, we actually recognize that revenue there and then transfer it to the debt service. We got it on the debt service side, we failed to pick up the same amount on the bond side, so we have to have those match. So that one is just a correction of an error on that loan bond fund. It won't make any change to our debt fund balance at all.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
We have a few items on motion. School technology purchase. Mr. Ringstaff, would you speak to us, please, about this?
Good evening, members of the City Council. First, I would like to thank you for placing us on the agenda before Mr. Gore tonight.
That's pretty good.
Secondly, I would like to request for you to approve a purchase of computers for our staff and our students. I think we're going to purchase about 2,000 computers. This will get us at a ratio of two students per one computer. We're going to piggyback off of Wilson County contract for Dale, since Dale is located in Wilson County. They have given him the best deal, and so everybody in the state is going to piggyback off of Wilson County's deal. So I request approval of this, these purchases.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and second?
Just a quick question. Yeah, when we approved the request for funding these, was that in the budget or community CIP?
I believe these were taken out of the CIP, and these are out of the operating budget for this year. And we did, this is the second round. We did this last year as well, in last year's budget.
Let me clarify a little bit.
Is it the other way around?
CIP, we had money for Salem Elementary that didn't get finished, being spent out. They finished the school, saved money. So this is money coming from that savings and still being used for the schools. It was just allocated for the elementary school at the beginning. The rest of it is coming from county shared bond money, which is given to us only for the use of the schools. So both of these pots of money are for the schools, have been for the schools from the beginning. We're just reallocating the CIP, which we actually had on the consent agenda. We moved that money from one project to another, but still within schools.
Gotcha. Nope.
Any further comments? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
The next item, water storage tank actuator modifications. Mr. Gore?
Councilman Shacklet, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. I almost just want to ask, is there any questions on the next three items? But I do have actually a little presentation to provide because I like to give a little background on what some of this is and, in essence, inform the public as well. This first item is a request to purchase actuators at our existing tank sites. Right now, we've got valves that we can open and close fully, or fully closed, fully open. This would allow a partial opening, and I'll give you a little exhibit on this slide. I'm going to show you how our tanks fill, and you can kind of watch the animation here. But Jones Boulevard fills first, and then Hall's Hill, and then we have Mill Street Tank, Stony Meadow, and then Tiger Hill fills last. So what ends up happening, and this graph isn't going to mean a whole lot to you, other than you can kind of see that spike, when those first three tanks fill, we have a pretty strong pressure spike to fill Stony Meadow and Tiger Hill. So what we intend to do with these actuators is to create a back pressure effect. This back pressure effect would, in essence, put more, it would allow the tanks to fill at the same time and would eliminate this pressure spike. That pressure spike, eliminating that pressure spike has a lot of advantages, less leakage, less water residences having problems with pressure surges. So it's a fairly inexpensive, we thought we were going to have to put in a couple of booster stations in the system, which was going to be upwards of $800,000. This is, when you take into account the software and the actuators itself, you're looking at somewhere around $150,000, so it's about a $700,000 savings. And we think this solution is going to be really, do well for our customers, as well as the water quality aspect of it, too. With these tanks filling and emptying at the same time, that means the turnover in the tanks is going to be equal as well. So we don't see anything but good things happening from this. So we would request the actuators at this time, it's a $24,300 purchase to get the actuators in place. We will be coming back later for the cost, or for the request to get the software, the distribution system optimizer software, which is around $150,000. That's not tonight. Tonight is just to get the actuators set up for this future condition. I'm available for questions.
Mr. Gore, I'm really trying to understand what you're telling me, and let me say what I think you said, and you tell me if I'm correct.
Sure.
In order to reduce the pressure on the side of pushing the water, you're going to pull a vacuum on the backside of it, requiring less pressure to move it forward.
We're going to create back pressure on those three tanks that fill so quickly. We're going to partially close those valves, so it creates a little bit of a back pressure so that that water is forced to those farther tanks. It's not a vacuum, but it is a back pressure.
Right.
Probably what I would have done, too. I'll move for approval on that.
Second. We always learn something. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Continuing with Mr. Gore, West Fork, Stones River bios assessment and J. Percy Priest stratification study.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is, as stated in the memo, a continued river and reservoir health assessment that we've been doing for some years. I want to give you kind of some, again, paint the full picture here. We have some milestones that we've been trying to achieve with TDEC even prior to my position as director, and I'm going to put these up on the screen. In 2004, we did invest in Tennessee's largest water reuse system. That was a big deal. That's when we bought the Coleman and the Jordan Farms, 600 acres for dedicated disposal. 2005, we started our municipal separate storm sewer systems, our stormwater program. 2007, we started an in-depth sanitary sewer rehab program. 2012, we optimized our operations at the Water Resource Recovery Facility for nutrient reduction. We do an annual Tennessee macroinvertebrate testing. We started that in 2014. We've been doing that annually. We started, we initiated our waste load allocation model for the West Fork-Stones River, and we partnered with General Mills to reduce our phosphorus loading. You know, they're irrigating Indian Hills that takes about half of our phosphorus loading out. We did a stratification dye trace study on how our Water Resource Recovery Facility effluent affected J. Percy Priest Reservoir, and in 2019, you all know, last year, we did a pretty extensive sewer allocation ordinance to try to control how much influence we have coming into the, our Water Resource Recovery Facility. Tonight, we're asking for that annual assessment of the Tennessee macroinvertebrate index for the West Fork and to conduct another stratification study. Just to kind of, what is a TMI, or a Tennessee macroinvertebrate index? We go out in the stream, we kick, kick the bugs up, kick the rocks, we take them into a lab, we look under a microscope, how many bugs you have, the cross-sex, the diversity of the bugs, there are certain sensitive species of bugs, it gives you a certain score. The highest score you can get on a TMI is 42. That's perfect. So how do we fare? The green line is 32. That's our eco-region reference stream. If you're above 32, you're in great shape. That dashed blue line is where our effluent goes into the stream. So everything downstream of that blue line and above that 32 shows that we have very, very good health stream. This is one of the reasons we go to TDEC, talked about expanded effluent, that we have a very, very good Tennessee macroinvertebrate index downstream of our effluent, so we're not harming the stream. The stratification study, this is a shot of what we did in 2018, we actually released dye into the stream. That stream goes downriver, gets into the lake. Don't want to get too crazy here, but there's three, if you've ever, best way I can say it, if you've ever dove into a lake in the summertime, it's really hot on the surface, and all of a sudden you get about 14, 15 foot deep, and it gets really, really cold, that's where you've got a stratification. What we're trying to demonstrate here is that we're not going into the upper, the lower part of the lake, but our effluent is staying in that middle portion. Why are we trying to prove that? Because Smyrna's raw water intake is at the bottom of the lake, and we've had certain assertions to say that maybe our effluent, the phosphorus in our effluent is creating some issues for Smyrna's water plant, or water supply. This stratification study, if we stay in that middle portion of the lake during the summertime, demonstrates that we do not have, we're not getting into that lower hypolympneon layer. So those are the two items we're asking for. I know that's a lot, sorry about that, the in-depth deal here, but I think it's important for you all to kind of understand, when we come up here and ask for these large, because this is a fairly significant amount of money that we're asking for to continue to do these studies. I think we're talking about $108,800 to do both of these things, but I think it's very important for you all to see how it fits in the bigger picture and how we're trying to weave, weave kind of this holistic approach for TDEC, so when we go ask for this expanded permit and this expanded, so we can put more effluent in the river, and we can expand our plant and continue to allow sewer connections to occur, that these studies matter. And so I'm available for questions, but if not, I would request your approval for $108,800 to do these things.
Do they make you do that dye test at a certain time of the year? I mean, because if thermocline obviously is going to matter, so...
Yes, we do that. It needs to be, you know, August, September, when there's very little rainfall, and then the lake has stratified, right? There's no, if you've got a lot of water coming in from the river, there's mixing that occurs, right? And those thermocline, those layers don't set up properly. So we have to do it very low flow from the river into the lake, and when that lake has set up and those stratified.
Interesting. I'll move for approval if there's no other questions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Well, let's see if you can go three for three.
One more. Thank you.
Overall creek pumping station upgrade and additions.
So this is kind of an aerial photograph of our overall creek pump station, right off of Broad Street, close to Singer Road and overall creek, obviously. And this is kind of a planar metric view of the engineering drawing. The ultimate overall goal is to double this pump station's size, and that's going to be around a $17 million project, or effectively just going to mirror what's there, okay? That's not what I'm asking tonight. Before we do the larger scale project, we're asking to upgrade, this pump station's about 21, 22 years old, and there's soft start removal, a lot of the controls, the control panel, some of the electrical gear needs to be upgraded. That's part of that $385,000 that we originally asked for. Since that time, there's been some additional, again, the soft start removal and replacement control panel upgrades, that's in the $1658,000. What we're asking for tonight is the additional engineering services to design for those replacements. So it's a $14,445 request tonight for the engineering task order. But again, I'd like you all to see the whole enchilada. I mean, this is not just, this is $14,000 in conjunction with about a half a million dollar improvements to get the older part of the station prepared and up to date, so that when we do the new upgrade, the bigger $17 million project, we've got basically a brand-new pump station out there. So that's what we're asking for tonight, is the $14,445.
The $14,000, it's no additional money to, we've already paid for the engineering for this project, and they're asking for more money for the same project, or...
They're asking for more money because we've asked for the design to get the soft, these other, these requested added scope items, the soft start removal and replacement and the control panel upgrades. They needed to do some additional design to get those two items into the bid or into the upgrade package. So it is, yes, it's additional engineering fees, but we're adding, we've changed the scope.
It's an appropriate percentage of the kind of the value typically, I mean, is that right?
I always double check that, yes, sir. It's a little higher percentage than you would see for maybe a roadway or a conventional civil project, because it does deal with, you've got several mechanical, electrical controls, process guys. It's multidisciplinary.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Move for approval.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Any board and commission appointments?
Not tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
All right, permits. We have a few permits, Ms. Wright?
We do. We have two restaurants, one at 120 Eleanor Way, Suite A, and one at 1720 Oakport Parkway, Suite C, 170. The first one is a new location for beer. There's, it's not been there before. The second one has had a restaurant in that location before, so it is an ownership and a name change. The, I think they both, no. The first one, the one on Eleanor Way, still needs to finish up its building codes inspections. The one on Oakport Parkway is actually ready to issue. So if you don't have any problems with approving it, we would issue it tomorrow. The other one will wait until they satisfy their codes inspections.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Could I ask a quick question? I'm so sorry.
Sure.
I was trying to...
That's okay.
The last thing on the crab fever?
Mm-hmm.
The last thing on the TBI FBI list, sale or attempted sale or purchase or attempted purchase, what is that typically? What does that even mean?
Oh, I bet it doesn't print.
It doesn't say what the purchase is. Attempted sale or purchase of what?
I do not know. I have a staff member that fills this out. We had already talked about what was on the list, and none of it was anything that would preclude them from getting a beer permit, but apparently that didn't print, actually, when she printed it out.
Okay, so you guys had more full information on it than what's on here?
We actually had the report.
Mr. Tucker?
I was contacted by staff before this was submitted, and it does have to do with the illegal sale of scrap metal.
That's what I was thinking.
And that's what they were, but they, it's not, it's not something that falls within the prohibitions for...
There wasn't illegal sale of alcohol to...
No.
It was all at the same time, the one above it is the same date. That's what I thought, too.
All the dates are right around each other.
I saw what they were saying, but I just couldn't, you know, it didn't say what it was, so I wanted to make sure. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
All right, statements?
Not any tonight.
No statements tonight. We have some other business concerning our fuels at the airport. Mr. Gerke, if you'll come in.
Yes, thank you, members of the City Council. As you know, our businesses, we have a number of businesses in our community that provide excellent service and products so that we can do our job here in the community, and one of those that we'd like to extend the contract one more year is Eastern Aviation Fuels, which provides us our aviation fuels to be able to fuel the aircraft at the airport. In 2017, we did a competitive bid process, and Eastern Aviation was awarded the contract for three years and two one-year extensions, and we'd like to extend that one more year.
Move for approval.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Other business?
Point of clarification, sorry. I meant to bring this up. In my memo on the first item with the actuators, my memo states $24,300. The actual quote is $25,925.96, so it's a little bit off there, and I meant to mention that it's subject to legal approval because we don't have the contract yet, so this is all subject to their approval as to form on the contract. I don't think that needs another motion.
Do we need any kind of motion on that? Melissa, or do you...
I don't think so. It was in the, it was in the letter, wasn't it?
The memo, the, well, the memo, or the quote is correct in the packet, it just didn't match up with my memo number, so I just wanted to make sure we, it's about, it's a $1,400 or $1,700 difference.
Adam?
Mr. Tucker, what...
The safest option would be to vote on it again.
Which item number was that here?
It was number...
10.
Number 10.
10.
Move for approval on item number 10 with the amendment of the corrected numbers.
Second. And there's a motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. Is there other additional other business?
I had something, Ms. Shackleton, I wanted to bring up. I I called Mr. Tyndall today just to have some discussion about this, and a lot of it was probably prompted by the email that was sent out that we received related to someone testing positive for COVID at Water Resources, I think, yesterday when that email came out. And there's been a lot of discussion in the community, a lot of discussion nationally about masks and our ability to, you know, mandate mask and those types of things. And frankly, myself personally, I wear a mask to work, but that's really the only place I wear a mask. I don't wear a mask anywhere else. But it one of the things that did cross my mind after thinking about the fact that I don't wear a mask everywhere I go is if I were an employee, you know, for the city and I was working at Water Resources and someone had tested positive there, you know, it would probably generally be concerning to me. I'd probably be a little fearful of that. And so as I started chewing on that a little bit, it made me ask the question, you know, are we doing enough? Do we feel like we're doing enough as a as a council, as a as a city to protect our staff? I know that's a dicey issue. It's a tough issue, but I felt like there was some merit in bringing it up and having the conversation because while I am not as fearful as I think some other folks are, I think what we don't want to do is penalize folks that may be fearful or to have a policy that that may not make others comfortable or may make them fearful. So I just wanted to bring it up for conversation. I felt like it was healthy and good, and if if nothing else, if if we don't decide to do anything different, at least the staff knows we're thinking about their safety and welfare and we're willing to have that conversation.
You know, we got an email that has some commentary about it, but Mr. Tucker, I mean, do you do you want to give us a rundown on kind of what some of the legal ramifications might be of whatever, you know, if we do mandate, if we don't mandate, if we, you know, how much do we have to maintain? How much do we have to monitor? You know, those kinds of things. Can you give us a little bit of your opinion on those things?
Struggling to answer your question about what.
So in generally speaking, you know, from what you know from a legal perspective, us looking at this from an organizational perspective and leadership perspective, I mean, what are the legal things we need to know about whether or not we, you know, require masks here, don't require masks there? If we do this, do we do that? I mean, there it seems to be that this could go, you know, it could go a lot of different ways, all the way from the spectrum of we don't even let people wear masks to all the way to we make everybody wear masks even if you're driving around in your car by yourself.
Right.
Right? I mean, which, you know.
Okay. So oh, so in terms so in terms of there's two questions here.
Employee-wise, let's talk about employee-wise first.
There's the employee question and then there's the community-wise.
Let's talk about employee-wise.
Okay.
I don't I don't think.
And to clarify, that's really my the focus of my question. It's not community-wide that I'm thinking of.
There is in the state of Tennessee, there is or in Rutherford County, there's no legal mandate requiring employers to wear masks or employees to wear masks or requiring that employers require employees to wear masks. The guidance from the Department of Health and from the governor is that it's it's recommended when social distancing is not practicable. That in and there is not, again, there's not a legal requirement at this time in the state of Tennessee.
Is it legal to require it?
Is it legal to requir? I I think under under the governor's executive orders, I think it is legal for a local government to require that masks be worn by employees or that masks be worn by people who come into city buildings. That authority, I believe, exists because it relates specifically to the government operations.
So we could fire employees if they didn't wear a mask?
I wouldn't I wouldn't I don't know, you know, I don't know what, you know, what type of discipline would come of that there, but there that authority does exist. So I, you know, that is.
Well, I mean, what will we do if we say we're going to require it and people, you know, you catch somebody walking through the, you know, the parking garage or something, oh, he doesn't have his mask on or whatever, you know, so we're just going to.
That's a tough question. I don't I don't have the answer for that right now. You know, what I don't know what I've not investigated what other government entities have done with respect to how they enforce it.
Maybe that'd be a good start.
So, Adam, the governor came down to say that he was putting it in the hands of the county mayors. Our county mayor says he didn't he didn't suggest or make a mandate that we had to wear masks. So basically, I think what Ronnie's saying is we're looking, we want to look out for our employees for the city.
Right.
What can we do separate or what can we do different? I think that's the question that we're trying to ask. I think we need to do some study on this. I think it needs to be a quick study, and I think it needs to come back once our mayor's here, once our vice mayor's here, and we're all able to talk about this. I think it needs to be brought up in our next meeting, and then we can talk about what we think is best for our our employees here with the city.
Yeah, I think enforceability, you know, look, I'm not even really playing devil's advocate. I'm just trying to figure out what we got in front of us as far as if we try to make some suggestions where we work, there are some suggestions. They sound like mandates, but they're, I think, strong suggestions is the way that I would really categorize them.
Right.
But, you know, we got I think we also got to be very cognizant of the idea that there might be some repercussions of things like that. I mean, you know, we I don't think we ever go into changing the handbook, you know, any policy in the handbook, so to speak, without knowing that there's some repercussions of those things down the line. And so anyway, yeah, maybe the first step will be just let's try to at least make sure we know both sides of that. The enforcement piece is something that would worry me about that, you know, how much we have to monitor and maintain, how much we have to require as relation. You know, we got the email the other day about the OSHA requirements on PPE. I mean, there are already these standards set for that, and, you know, so those are the kinds of things I think probably we need to know. But yeah, absolutely. You know, for me, too, I'm, you know, it makes sense to me if you're going to get in an elevator with six or eight or ten people, that's maybe a perfect place to put one on. If you're in your office by yourself, I don't think I'd be requiring anybody to do that, you know, me personally. You know, if you're six feet away, I'm obviously don't think that's an issue, right? But if there's some steps that we can take that don't require or don't put us in a bad position legally, don't, you know, require some or produce some really unwanted results down the road, sure, I think, you know, looking through those things, good idea to kind of check on.
If I could just add a couple of a couple of things. It is it employee safety obviously is very important to us. It has been from the very beginning. In fact, I think about three, three, four years ago, we hired our a new safety director with quite a few certifications in the legal department, now in the HR department. She spends a lot of time monitoring employee safety, but it is a complex question. It's one that we discussed the complexities to that implementation. I mean, I hear and I have heard in the past that just tell people to wear masks. It's that simple. It's not that simple. We're a very complex organization that has lots of different departments doing lots of different things. So council members' wage suggestion, I think, is is one that is is well taken, and and council members of the lands just pointing out a few of the facts that we would have to consider is is something important. Now, we have we are following recommendations. We give staff CDC recommendations. We have implemented, Mr. Whitaker did a great job implementing barriers where we interface with the public if we don't have them. They're constructed, they're in place, they're available for employees to hire. We've for a long time said, if you feel like you need to be comfortable wearing a mask, wear a mask. We also have employees who are not comfortable wearing masks who have breathing issues or they're in an environment where wearing a mask is very difficult. Maintaining that mask in a healthy condition is very difficult. So it isn't as simple just telling people to wear masks. There are employers where it is because they have a lot of consistency through their organization. We don't have that. So I think it's a suggestion well taken. We can we can certainly look at it. We can look at some of the complexities, some of the legal issues that were raised, and we have a workshop on the fifteenth. Might be a time to come back and revisit a couple of those issues.
So can we put it on the agenda for the fifteenth?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I can tell you I'm no mask expert, but I I get a lot of information about masks, and I've got a lot in the last couple of days. But I think some of the things that we all need to be thinking about, Ronnie, you said you wanted to have a conversation, so let's talk about it. Where can you wear where do you wear the mask at? People outside that are mowing lawns and working in Barfield Park in the outback area, will they be required? Will people who work in an office by themselves, will they be required? Would two people in an office be any different than one person with social distancing? Would employees who definitely come in contact with the outside, would they be dealt with differently than than the other employees? You can always ask the question of is is a mask going to protect you? I mean, I'm certainly not a doctor, so I'm not going to tell you the the difference between the size and the microbes of a COVID virus versus the what a mask will allow to flow in and out, but I'm there's a lot of a lot of conversation about it. And I also think there's the one thing that concerns me quite a bit is when everybody's required to wear a mask, what about those that don't have masks on and is there any HIPAA issues involved? Because some people simply can't wear a mask, and and I think you may be bringing to light some of the issues that may be personal and private to them as well. So I I I think there's a lot to be discussed here, and certainly I want the mayor to be involved in this process once once we do talk about it. But we certainly do want to make sure that our employees are safe and take every action that's possible to make sure that they are protected. And 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 then the next level would be to make sure that anybody who comes into our buildings that are exposed to our employees and vice versa, how would you deal with that? So and and I think there's probably some locations where you may encounter people in the outdoors that might be differently. And and of course, with parks and stuff opening up now, you know, are you going to require people that walk on your greenways? If you go to the next level, are you going to require people that walk on your greenways to wear masks? So it's just it's like level on top of level on top of level, and it's it's not going to be as simple as Craig said. So appreciate you listening to me.
If if I'll note, one of the things, one of the places where council or city manager, if they were interested in shaping a policy on masks, the place to start would be the governor's most recent executive order on masks because it lays out specific requirements for any mandate issued by accounting mayor. So that would be the I would say that would be the starting point.
That's more community, though.
That's more community, but a lot of the the exceptions that that are a number of the exceptions that are in that order would also apply to an employer requirement.
Maybe shoot us a copy of that or something where we can read that already?
I'll resend it. I think I sent it, but I will send it this evening so council members have it.
He can bring he can bring that at the workshop and we can talk about that.
Yeah, well, if you just send maybe send the executive order, we can all.
Yeah, it's it's a it's a short order. It's maybe maybe three pages.
That way we can read it between now and then.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, did you want to make a comment? I heard your voice.
Yes, and this is just my personal opinion. You know, I know our society, well, let me say, in our society, you know, we no man is an island, you know, and we have laws that make us live and work together freely. We all realize that. And our government, I think it's here to promote social order and well-being because, you know, we have laws and rules that promote this. I think as leaders, we should set an example, and here again, my comments are my comments, just my personal comments. When you look at the downside of this terrible virus, what if our hospital beds are full with patients that have the virus? And then I get sick, I have a heart attack, and then I go to the hospital and there are no bed for me because we have people, I think, dying for no reason other than this virus. Life is is so precious, and to me, what is the difference in not wearing a mask versus the possibility of going out here, out here killing children and adults? I personally think this is not a work issue. It's a matter of public health, and by not wearing a mask, I think we are violating everybody else's constitution rights. Do we want this airborne situation and not wear a mask and take it home to our loved ones? There are people walking around here right now that have the virus and don't even know they have it yet. And so these things bother me. I have personal five close friends have died to this virus, and I know eleven people right here in Murfreesboro that I'm close to that has this virus. So and we're talking about the economy, open the economy. Everybody gets upset if we close the economy. We won't even have an economy if if we keep letting these numbers rise and rise when we, in my opinion, can prevent it. I guess, long story short, guys, I'm not with you and haven't been with you since we closed all over the nation because I'm just not going to subject myself to coming out without a mask. And these comments are just my comments.
Okay, colleagues, are there any other comments?
Can I make one more comment, too? And and I just want to really challenge us. If if we think there's a legal precedent that this is, you know, can't be done, I'm okay with that. Again, I'm not trying to dictate what we do to every citizen in Murfreesboro. That's not the point. But we, you know, we work complicated problems all the time. We solve complex problems all the time. To me, the fact that this is complex is not a great answer related to coming up with a good solution. So from the standpoint of us saying, if we just want to say, hey, we don't think that's what we want to do, that's one thing, but I don't think it's too complex for us to come up with a solution. That's my final comment.
Mr. Tucker, I have a question. If we have an employee that infects someone, that employee dies, and let's say maybe one or two people they work around dies, can we be sued as a city if I not allowing having our employees wear masks?
That situation would be treated as a workers' comp claim, and so is it likely to result in a loss a lawsuit outside of the workers' comp system? I think my my answer would be probably not, but I think there is there is the potential for workers' comp claims if as there as there is for, you know, for firefighters who are first responders who contract TB when they're responding to a medical emergency, it would be treated very similar to that.
Okay, you know, I wanted to make a comment that, you know, it's there's a lot of things government can do, but there are some things that government can't do. And you can't legislate responsible behavior. There will always be someone that will want to act irresponsibly. That doesn't keep us from having speed limits. It doesn't keep us from telling you, you should text and drive. Until we this is a new to all of us, every at every level of government, trying to figure out how to deal with this and balance the fragile nature of our economy and the fragile nature of handling public health in a pandemic. I think we do have some responsibility to to have conversation about that and to do all we can, but. can. But until we have some definitive understanding and consensus as to what is the right thing to move us forward, I would encourage our employees, I would encourage our citizens to explore and look for information on their own and determine what is the responsible way to care not only for yourself, but to corporately care for the health of our community. Because I don't care what law we put down or what protocols we put in place for our employees, if people aren't willing to care for others in the midst of something like this, in the long term, we're all going to suffer. So I would encourage you, until we can, and, and dialogue is really important. I think we need to hear each other and do our own investigation as to facts and what alternatives and options we have to act as your government. But, you know, sometimes, you said a long time ago, you might look up the golden rule. Think about others as we make decisions about things. And, you know, the, the issue is, if we were caring for others, then, then maybe there's another consideration for, that would affect our actions. And don't be so constrained in our vision for what we're doing that we can't change and we can't grow and we might alter our actions in the midst of something as unstable as the environment that we're in today. And then we will get through this. We'll get through this together.
And Bill, I'll tell you, the biggest challenge that I faced with this whole deal. Back in March, somebody told me that if we quarantined for two weeks, we'd get beyond this. And then they said, three weeks and we'd get beyond this. And then they said, well, maybe if you're staying for a month, we'll get beyond this. And then they said, well, maybe if we just go through the spring, through the end of the school year, we'll get through this. And, and, and all this time, we've got businesses that are suffering incredibly. We're going to lose a ton of small business. Seventy percent of our business in Murfreesboro is small business. And we're going to lose a bunch of those. And we know that. And, and I know I'm going to get criticized for saying I'm taking economics over the, the medical side of it. But, but, but there's a realistic side of the damage that's done when you're destroying your economy as well. And, and, and I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that when you're shutting down businesses, in June alone, in Rutherford County, the E M, not the, the medical examiner saw eight suicides and 31 drug overdoses of people who were at home. That's 39 deaths in Murfreesboro that had nothing to do with the COVID medical side of it, but it did directly, a lot of them, I'm assuming, had something to do with the economic COVID side of it. So, so I think there's, you know, and, 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 and nobody's getting criticized more than me right now, I can tell you, as far as in this city of Murfreesboro. But, but we have to be careful with our information that we get because the information we keep getting is, is different and it changes daily. And, and, and we're impacting people's lives. Small business, people who are entrepreneurs who have really struggled to try and create a business and build a business, very few of those had three months' worth of inventory or, or had the ability to go three months without operating. And, and now we're going on six months into this. And, and so, we haven't seen the impact because people who have been at home, many of them have been getting checks and stuff from the government that they're saying, hey, it's great right now. I'm getting more money now than I was when I was working. But, you know, but that has to have an end. And there has to be some point where, you know, other countries are, are dealing with this differently, I know. And, and I'm sure you can study all the different curves and the waves and stuff as they've, as this pandemic has gone on. But, 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 but my struggle is to get good information because if somebody told me, hey, if everybody would wear a mask for three weeks, we, we could cure this thing, I'd be the first to put a mask on. But, but we keep getting told something different every time. And, and I know that our police officers are busy, that, that our police officers are not just out standing around every day and night. And, and for them, if, if we go to the level that Franklin's at, trying to issue $25 tickets for people who are walking around, I mean, at MTSU, we've got a group of people that, that sit there and monitor what other people are doing with their mask. And it's, and it's, it's the Gladys Kravitz effect is what I'll refer to it as, which is probably not a good example. But every time they see somebody who's in violation, they call the department head and say, hey, so and so's got, they're walking down the hallway without a mask on. Well, you know, I think sometimes you got to have personal responsibility, you got to have common sense, and you got to have the appreciation for, we, we, we do deserve in this country a certain amount of freedom. It was, it's what makes this country different than other countries. And so, the, the responsibility, if you think you've been exposed, definitely stay home, quarantine. If you think you might have been, even slightly, stay home and quarantine. My wife's flying back on an airplane tomorrow from Iowa. And when she gets back, if I find out that anybody on her airplane had COVID, she's in quarantine for two weeks. I mean, but that's responsibility and that's, that's something that, you know, and, and of course, I know you can say, well, we can, we can pass laws and we can enforce speeding. Well, we, we, we don't catch everybody who speeds, but we do have the responsibility to, to put in law, in, in situation, put our officers in a situation where they know that these courts are going to support whatever it is that what they write and, and try to enforce. And, and I don't know if even the court support is there for this. So it, so it's very complex. It's, it's not an easy thing to do. And, you know, I know I've made the comment, you know, when in doubt, err to the side of freedom. And, and I'm getting beat up for that, too. But the, I, I do think that, you know, we, we have to let the economy get going as well because there's devastating effects of having our country shut down. And, and at some point, we're going to have to go back to work and we're going to have to go back to school. And we're going, and, and you can't wait for there to be absolutely no cases. I mean, if we're looking at declines in deaths, every time, every time somebody's diagnosed with COVID, there's always going to be a record number of COVID cases because they don't drop off the backside. The number only grows of positive cases. So we, you know, it, it's a complex issue, one that I've certainly struggled with myself. And I hope y'all help coach me and direct me and, and give me your honest opinions on what you think. And let's, let's continue to communicate.
All right. Good discussion. We'll continue this one. Our mayor, and you're not dealing with a scrub mayor. We'll get the first timers in here. Oh, I'm sorry, Madeline, go ahead.
Mr. Smotherman, you made some excellent points, very excellent points. If you look at statistics, these countries that are improving, they are improving because they're wearing masks. I'm not going to get into it with you tonight, anybody else, but the, we need to put on the mask.
Well, that's been our recommendation from our county mayor as well. And that Rutherford, it's called Rutherford Responsible. So I encourage you to look that up and see what the mayor, Catherine, has recommended. Another thing we can do, just a reminder, that benefits our community is our census count. And if you have not done that, I would encourage you to participate in the census. This has huge financial, I guess, implications to our budgets at this county level, at our city level. You need to be counted. And those in your household need to be counted. It's a, a long process that happens, but it profoundly affects the funding for your local government. So I'd encourage you, that's not only vote, but get counted. Do your, your part to help our, make our community even better. Are there any other?
Bill, I was just going to say, on, on that topic you're discussing there, the impact is significant. And just so the public kind of has some feel when we say it's a lot of money, it's a, it's a little over $1,100 that we get because you said, I live in Murfreesboro. And last time we did a census, we probably, we estimate that we may have missed 20,000 people in Murfreesboro. That 20,000 people times that $1,100, we're talking about over, what, $20 million? So at, we're talking about a significant amount of money that will come into the city of Murfreesboro if we can get a accurate count on, on the number of people that are in our city. So.
Good point.
You said it. Make it count.
Anybody else?
I'm going to do something I hadn't had a chance to do. And I think everybody, you got to have a chance to do this at least once in your city council career. Any other business? No other business? We adjourn.